Thank you. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we please start with a roll call?
Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Corman. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Does it make your right move to excuse the absent council?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, to, um...
Excuse.
Excuse, excuse, I lost the word for my... Excuse, uh, the absent council member. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, first up, we have two proclamations to start off today.
Okay, the first proclamation is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Proclamation, whereas Columbus Day is observed as a federal holiday established by order of President Roosevelt in 1937 and provides an opportunity to reflect on the colonization of North America by Europeans, whereas the European colonization of North America also led to the suppression, forced assimilation, and genocide of indigenous peoples in their cultures, whereas indigenous peoples of the Puget Sound region enjoyed and exhibited a rich, diverse culture and enduring spirit that continues to be celebrated to this day in Renton and throughout this region, and whereas the city of Renton values the historic and contemporary contributions made to this community by all our region's past and present indigenous peoples, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas in 2011, the affiliated tribes of Northwest Indians, representing 59 tribes, passed Resolution 1157, "Support to Change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day," and whereas recognizing indigenous peoples on the second Monday of October would help provide a more balanced representation of our region's cultural history and constitute a small act of restitution for the hardships endured by indigenous peoples since the onset of European colonization of the Americas, and whereas the city of Renton celebrates diversity, equity, and inclusion and is committed to promoting respect for and understanding of the region's indigenous community, their long history, and their continuing contribution to contemporary society, now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2020 to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observation and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 12th day of October 2020. Signed, Armando Pavoni, mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, uh, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the proclamation be adopted, as read.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the proclamation be adopted, as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Well, we're lucky to have with us tonight to accept the proclamation, Matt Remley. Now, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, and thank you for having me here. Uh, hello everybody, my English name is Matt Remley, my local name is Wakiawanatan, and, um, thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you for the council for passing this proclamation tonight. Uh, my family, we're from, uh, the Standing Roxu tribe, but are, uh, live up in Seattle, and as the author of actually that affiliated tribes, uh, Northwest Indians Resolution from 2011, as well as Seattle's, uh, resolution in 2014, uh, our Indigenous Peoples' Day Resolution up here, uh, I'm honored that, uh, your city council, and I heard Auburn as well, passed a, a resolution honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's, it's a very beautiful thing to be witnessing, uh, the growth of Indigenous Peoples' Day. In 2014, when we passed our resolution in Seattle, uh, we were actually just the third, uh, jurisdiction to do so, following Berkeley and the state of South Dakota. Uh, today, Renton and Auburn join over 130 cities in seven states that have since passed Indigenous Peoples' Day resolutions, so, uh, thank you, and, and I also want to give acknowledgement to our, uh, Duamish, uh, host relatives, uh, Duamish who are original peoples of, from Seattle through Renton, throughout this area, and then spread to, uh, various, uh, reservations as far north as Lummi and Talela, uh, south into Mukulshu, east into Snoqualmie, west into, uh, the Suquamish reservations, as well as a number of Duamish relatives who, who didn't get, uh, enrolled into tribes, so, uh, let's, uh, show support for our Duamish relatives who are on those reservations, as well as, uh, make it out to the Duamish Longhouse out in, uh, West Seattle, it's a beautiful place, uh, and show your support for our relatives out there, and, uh, they have a, a site called Real Rent Duamish, check it out, and, uh, support the Duamish relatives. Thank you. Madakweli.
Thank you, Matt, I really appreciate it, we really appreciate you, uh, coming on such, such short notice and, um, providing us with that information, that's fantastic. Thank you. Okay, uh, next up, we have a proclamation for Affordable Housing Week.
Okay, Affordable Housing Week proclamation. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities of opportunity, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities, and whereas the most recent point in time count found 1,115 people in our region of King County sleeping outdoors with shelter in January of this year, and 5,840 families in Renton are considered housing insecure because they were spending more than half of their income on rent and, rent and utilities, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exasperated, uh, exact, many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households, and whereas Governor Inslee has extended a residential eviction moratorium through October 15th, 2020, to prevent families and individuals from losing their housing due to non-payment, and whereas housing stability and staying socially distant from those outside of our household has become our state's core public health strategy, and whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole, and whereas the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels, and whereas people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in Local Affordable Housing Week to elevate the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities, and whereas the city of Renton endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, it recommits itself to ensuring that our community recovers equitable from the crisis at hand, and that all people live with dignity in safe, health, and affordable homes. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim October 12th through 16th, 2020, to be Affordable Housing Week in the city of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in this special observation, and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed as 12th day of October 2020. Signed, Armando Pavoni, mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, I'd like to move that the proclamation be adopted, as read.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted, as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, and tonight to accept the proclamation is our own, uh, Ryan McGurven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will certainly speak to the proclamation, and, uh, I'd start by saying, uh, uh, the Housing Consortium, who, uh, had this proclamation adopted in numerous cities throughout the area, um, and, and I know they have a lot of events going on this week, or I'm sure they would have been able to be here too, so I will humbly attempt to, uh, speak to it, uh, and I'll keep it pretty brief. Uh, I've had the privilege of serving on the Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, and now the Affordable Housing Committee to, and representing the city of Renton, and, uh, I know we're working collectively as a region to address the horrible housing crisis we're in the midst of right now, and I know the city's been committed to that, uh, as for those who tuned, tuned in earlier to Committee of the Hall, saw some of the great things, great work we're doing within the city, uh, to promote, uh, the supply of affordable housing within Renton, uh, and anyone obviously who watched last week saw that we're committed to that in terms of, uh, applying that sales tax, uh, to, to ensure that we continue to build up that stock, so, uh, we have a great partner with the Renton Housing Authority, a great partner with, uh, Skip, uh, the South King County Coalition, and, um, and I think we have a lot of work left to do, but, um, I, I know that, uh, there's a lot of energy and a lot of focus around this right now, so, for anyone, I'll give the plug for Affordable Housing Consortium, the Housing Consortium, since they're not here to do it, uh, they're doing a digital week this week, and, uh, there's lots of opportunities online that you can attend forums or events, uh, seminars to educate yourself, so, at housingconsortium.org you can find information on their website, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ryan. Okay, next up, we have administrative report.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I got three quick items. Construction for the Coulon, uh, playground replacement will begin on October 26th. It includes removing and replacing the existing playground, exercise equipment, and evaluating the drainage, projects funded by taxpayers, uh, of Washington State through a direct legislative appropriation, and the Renton Regional Community Foundation, Charles L. Custer Renton Park Memorial Fund. The new playground with equipment chosen based on a community survey is expected to open in early 2021. Uh, Renton Outdoors is an ongoing, ongoing program of guided hikes offered at different parks. Uh, this Saturday, October 17th, plant species identification walks will take place at Coulon Park. Uh, due to COVID-19 protocols, groups are limited to five at a time, and participants must register using the course and event registration icon on the Recreation and Neighborhoods Division webpage. Uh, for the same self-guided hike, uh, the Plant Species Identification Walk brochure is available to download from the Jean Coulon Memorial Beach, uh, Park webpage. And finally, the Public Works Department would like to remind residents to help us prevent local residential street flooding by monitoring catch basins near your home and keeping them clear of leaves and other debris. Street sweepers are dispatched daily to clean up debris along major arterials. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we will open the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agenda. Please refer all your comments to the full council, and in doing so, we ask that you refrain from impugning the integrity of the members of this body. The city reserves the right to eliminate or end these public comment periods and/or remove anyone from the meeting at any point if we deem the system is being abused or is no longer suitable to allowing the city to conduct its necessary business. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by Julia Medzighian, council liaison. Ms. Medzighian will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker that will say you have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that is their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. When your time is almost up, please wrap up your comments. Ms. Medzighian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Julia Medzighian, city council liaison. I have no one signed up in advance to speak. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, please raise your hand via the computer. If you're calling in via phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see no one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda, we have six items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move that the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second. It's, it's been moved by, uh, Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up is unfinished business. Council President Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Councilmember Corman and the Planning and Development Committee, uh, there's a couple of committee reports to read in.
Uh, yes, we have, uh, six Planning and Development Committee reports. The first is the 2020 Title IV Docket 15 amendments. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt 2020 Title IV Docket Group 15, Group B. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Uh, this is Docket 176, Self-Service Storage and Commercial Zones, 177, Daycare Fees, 178, Standalone Solar Structures, 179, uh, CD Zone Changes, 180, Vesting Regulations, 181, ADU Amendments, 182, SEPA Appeal Process, and 183, Other Government Uses.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next committee report is regarding the 2020 Title IV Docket 15, Group A. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt amendments as outlined by Docket 173, waived fees. Additionally, the Planning and Development Committee recommends establishing a cap of 100 dwelling units in the total number of dwelling units eligible to benefit from waived fees. The Planning Development Committee further recommends that an ordinance for Docket 173 be prepared and presented for first reading when complete. Uh, the commit, this committee report shall supersede the, the committee report on Docket 173, signed on August 10th, 2020.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, I want to move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding the Comp Plan Amendments for 2020. Uh, the Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan with its associated map and text amendments. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the following items be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Uh, this is Comp Plan Amendment 19M01900 Lind Avenue, CPA 19M2, Zoning and Land Use Reconciliation, CPA 19M3, Benson Upland Group. Additionally, CPA 19M4, North 30th Street, will be held and processed during next year's comprehensive plan amendment cycle to allow time for further review and additional public engagement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report, as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is a resolution to adopt, uh, the South King Housing and Homeless Partners 2020-2021 Work Plan. Uh, the Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution adopting the 2020-2021 South King Housing and Homeless Partners, uh, known as Skip, work plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, this was part of the, uh, what a perfect, uh, committee report to adopt during Affordable Housing Week, so, I'd like to move that the council concur, uh, with the Planning and Development Committee report, as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
All right, the next report is also regarding Skip. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the resolution adopting the 2021, uh, South King Housing and Homeless Partners, Skip, budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, since council was gracious enough to just agree to the work plan, I would like to, uh, encourage them to also now fund it and contribute our local portion to that. Uh, this was using the, some of the monies from 1406, that, that, uh, sales tax, um, credit, that, not the one from last week, the earlier one that we talked about last year, so, uh, with that, before I go on too much further, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the final Planning and Development Committee report is regarding 2020 School District Capital Facilities Plans and Impact Fees. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the capital facilities plans for the Renton, Kent, and Isaguas school districts, and, and to incorporate the requested fee amounts for each district shown below into the Renton fee schedule. So for Renton for 2020, single family would be $7,681, multifamily $4,989. Uh, Kent for 2019 would be single family $5,692.85, multifamily $2,404.63, and Isaguas for 2019, a single family $18,213, and multifamily $12,043. Additionally, the committee recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for adoption.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, I definitely would like to support, urge the council to support, uh, passage of, uh, adoption of these fees, they are set by the school districts, but they help fund the necessary expansions as more, uh, children are added to the district, so with that, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Planning Development Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
That was it for Mr. McGurven.
That, that was it, okay. Uh, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, sir, Finance Committee has committee reports.
Okay, the Finance Committee, uh, has two reports, the first is approval of claims of payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments, accounts payable total payment, $11,546,217.95 for a number of, uh, vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and four wire transfers, and then two, uh, payroll total payment of $1,466,671.03 for payroll vouchers that include 568 direct deposits. This is for the September 1st through September 15th pay period, and then a Ketter Matthews vouchers totaling $39,438.48.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that Fin, uh, I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
All right, the final committee report is, uh, King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve two grant agreements for $5,000 each, which is $10,000 total, with King County's Youth and Amateur Sports Grants Program, subject to approval as deformed by the City Attorney Department, and allocate grant funds to the Recreation and Neighborhoods Division.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, we love accepting money, and this is gonna go to some good projects, um, at the Senior Activity Center and at, uh, a park in the Highlands. Uh, with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report.
Second. Been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Uh, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and next up, we have legislations, we have three resolutions and one ordinance for a second and final reading.
Okay, the first resolution is regarding the School District Impact Fees, council just, uh, approved. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting by reference the current capital facilities plans for Kent, Isaguas, and Renton school districts, and adopting updated school impact fees for each school district.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution is also regarding a, a committee report we just passed. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2020-2021 South King Housing and Homelessness Work Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the, the resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, this resolution is also regarding Skip. A resolution of the city council of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2021 South King Housing and Homelessness Budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
I move that this resolution be adopted, as read.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that this resolution be adopted, as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have one ordinance, and it's for second and final reading. Uh, bear with me. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, providing for relief from code standards by amending subsection 42110A, 42110E2, 42120A, 42120B, 42120C, 43100EB, 4495I, 4870D8, 49250B, 49250C, and 49250D of the Renton Municipal Code, repealing subsections 43100F, 43100G, 44130H, and 44130I of the Renton Municipal Code, relettering subsection 43100I of the Renton Municipal Code to 43100F, and adding 4410Q to section 4410 of the Renton Municipal Code, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, I'd like to move this ordinance be adopted, as read.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that this ordinance be adopted, as read, and it requires a roll call.
Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, we have new business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 19th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m., we will have a work committee of the hall via video conference, and we have one item in the agenda, which is budgeted department presentation and council deliberations. Also, on Monday, uh, October 19th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., we will have our city council meeting via video conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, Monday, October the 19th, at 2:00 p.m., the Utilities Committee will be meeting via teleconference. We have three items on the agenda, utility revenue and CIP, Burnett and Williams Water Quality Project, and Puget Sound Energy Easement. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, just wanted to announce that the Transportation Committee that would have been scheduled for Monday, October 19th, has been canceled. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
I think, I think we missed one. No new business, Mr. Mayor. Yes, uh, did we miss one, Jason, the public safety?
I see that too, yes, uh... Councilmember Benedetti.
No, Councilmember Benedetti, I, I think you have a meeting scheduled.
Oh, do I? I am sorry, I missed that.
I have the, I have the information, Councilmember Benedetti.
I don't have it up, so go ahead.